Good evening, everyone. Please rise from your seats and sit with the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, if you have any issues here in this room?
Welcome.
We just down here, huh?
Yes, please. So we have seven applicants for this position and the order we're going in tonight is they were really applied in. And we have a generic set of questions here for everybody, so everybody will be receiving the same group of questions. Tell us about yourself and why you decided to apply to serve on the school board.
I'm Nancy Hickson. I'm a transition assistant to Dr. Giuliano, semi-retired, a former school teacher, also worked in healthcare, went through with AYSO. The reason I decided to apply to the school board is because I've been in the back behind me, sitting for many years, probably before someone came along on the board, I've attended many of the meetings. The main reason is I just would like to see what I've seen over the past couple of years has things that continue to improve and I think there's still a lot of good bases where we can continue as a group and what I've seen is a lot of a good group starting up here. I would like to be part of that. I think the teachers and the administration is really great here and along with this board, I think we can go far away and that's what I want to do.
Cover this one in your first answer, if you have more, feel free. If appointed, what would be your objectives as a school director?
My objectives is to again continue the progress that I've seen going on over the past several years that I've been defending, seeing that what we can do, I know they want to say test scores, things like that, that isn't the whole thing. How we can get back to having a good school community where the kids are together and sharing with one another. It doesn't matter if they are in special ed, if they're not, things like that, that we can get the group getting along and the biggest thing is it needs to start up here in the board where people are getting along and like I said, I've seen that a lot lately and then carry on down through the administration, working together as a team versus some of the things that have gone on in the past.
What quality, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
Having been through, like I said, I was a teacher for 12 years. I've gone into paramedic, running different medic units, ambulances there. I then proceeded to begin to healthcare where I am in a solo, private one. We weren't bought out by any hospital and we're staying in flow, so I do know some of the finances. I also have been with AYSO when it was about 4,000 kids here and our budget was really high, about like you guys deal with the government and then giving you money, that's about AYSO with the way California did. We had to really work at how we do and knowing where and how to do budgets and so forth. And especially with my having been an athlete here, athletics is kind of important to me and I think I could do something there.
What do you believe our students should be able to do when they graduate?
That depends on the students and I think we need to follow what the students, we need to guide them, get them that way, but some students do not need to go to college, but first I'll start with those that need to. I think we need to continue with getting college prep courses, proceeding with all the different colleges we have here and getting them into following that type of agenda if that's what they need. But then there's the other students that sometimes I feel get left behind, those that aren't doing college prep. We need to look with the community here. We have Wise Partnerships, unfortunately, the Ribbon Track we will be leaving, AWS coming, Talon. Talon brings a lot of students in up there that are in high school. We need to get that developed in our district where we are taking these businesses and getting our students in with them so they're almost an apprentice type thing. There are a lot of carpenters, contractors around that would love to have them.
If appointed, would you be able to commit the time necessary to actively participate in the responsibilities of the board, including regular meetings, committee work, and potential service on additional boards such as the CSIU, VOTEC, which may require multiple leading commitments each year?
I need to be shorter for the rest of them, yes. I'm semi-retired, the only time that I work is Tuesday mornings and I can actually at any time readjust my schedule, have patients come in at a different time. So I am free through all seven days. I can adjust my schedule at any time because I do and am semi-retired and those on some of the committees know that I have shown up here at 10:00 AM for your committee meetings. So yes, I work in free.
Do you have any questions for us?
I have one question. I have one thing to say. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come here and be interviewed. That was very nice of you and I hope you continue to carry on with what you have and I hope someday it will work out. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
You're free to stay if you want to.
Maybe I want to go back there.
Probably.
It is. Oh my goodness.
Good evening. So we have five minutes to get through the questions. First question, tell us about yourself and why you decided to apply to serve on the school board?
My name is Arda Leeners. I've lived in the Berman community, actually Salem Township for 35 years. We raise our kids here. We've been an active, integral part of the school system. I'm a mom and I was on the school board for a period of 10 years and enjoyed it and then didn't, for honest sake. The longevity portion of being on the school board, it can get wearing, but I am an active community member. I work at the United Way, I run the pre-tax program. Last year I had the privilege of doing pre-taxes for over 1,400 citizens in our community and to bring that large amount of money back to our community and to save them from paying the preparation fees. I've always been involved. I feel like I'm having voice in the community. I like the people here and I think education is supremely important to our kids.
If appointed, what would be your objectives as a school director?
My objective would be to be an active placeholder for when you have elections in November. I'm not aspiring to run for the school board office in the future. I'm busy, the tax program I told you about, that would be at year number 10 and I've worked really hard to build it from a program that did about 180 taxes to the 1,400 and this year we have neither grand or gold given us by the IRS. So I would like to take the knowledge that I have because I don't have to start at the beginning and bring it to the board and apply.
What qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
I'm a talker. I have opinions. I'm not concerned about sharing those opinions although I try to share them with care, the way I thought someone's opinion, even if it was a different opinion, to be shared with me. I'm very fiscally minded. I like that aspect of the school board and I like people. That's it.
What do you believe our students should be able to do when they graduate?
Anything they want, everything they want and with great gusto. I would like our students to be the best of the best, to have an education that shows that their reading comprehension is fantastic, that they have the math skills needed to navigate, the technology skills. I have been fortunate to work with you that way, running the tax program. I have a 29-year-old and a 40-year-old that I work with who keep me up on the cutting edge of technology and without them, I would actually be lost. But now they're making me go to AI classes, which I would have cursed AI had it not been for them showing me how much value that's going to have and what we're going to need to know to navigate. So I'd like all of our students to be able to navigate what the future's going to bring with them.
If appointed, would you be able to commit the time necessary to actively participate in the responsibilities of the board?
Yes.
You have any questions for us?
No.
All right. Thanks for joining us.
It's very warm. Kudos to you guys for sitting in the warm room.
We're working on it.
Well, thank you very much.
Hopefully each project will start sooner than later.
How about that? Yes, that's a big project.
Thanks for talking.
Thank you.
Welcome. Tell us about yourself and why you decided to apply to serve on the school board?
My name is Mike Pion. I'm a 1997 graduate and 37-year resident of the school district. I got an associate's degree in federal state in 1999 and that's where I started my professional career, starting at the power plant in Berwick, worked there for just under 16 years as an operator, an instructor, and a training coordinator. I decided to leave there and pursue a business in Millville owning a restaurant. Did that for about four years along with owning rental properties as a joint venture also to Lincoln and Lock Creek Golf Course. After that, I went back to PPL in 2019 as a transmission system operator, did that for about three and a half years and now currently I'm with Talon back here in Berwick, moved back to the area or relocated from the job back to the area and I've been working there for the past two and a half years, started as a substation specialist and now supervisor at the end of last year. And the reason why I applied is because most of my working career, I've been working shift work and now I'm on a daily schedule that offers me way more flexibility than I ever had.
If appointed, what would be your objectives as a school director?
My objectives would be to learn as much as possible in order to make the best decisions that would impact and ensure the students of the district continue receiving quality education throughout their career.
What quality, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
About my experience is the biggest thing I've learned was to take in as much information as possible before making a decision so I can make an informed and thought-out decision. I'm also detail-oriented, like to pay attention to details and anything that people may have missed and I can also work and have worked effectively as a team.
What do you believe our students should be able to do when they graduate?
I believe the biggest goal would be that they're adequately prepared for whichever future they may choose, whether that be into the workforce, college, military, or a trade school.
If appointed, would you be able to commit the time necessary to actively participate in the responsibilities of the board?
Yes, I will and that's one of the reasons why I applied. As I said, I mostly work shift work and now my schedule of course is flexibility to make changes and adjustments and everything.
You have any questions for us?
The only thing is the term. I believe it's until the next election cycle.
It will be until November 30.
That's all I have right now?
You're welcome to stay if you want to or...
All right. Appreciate it.
Our next applicant is not able to join us in the room, so we'll be calling her for a conference interview. Chris, I'll be putting you on hold here. Hi, Leah, it's Jared Gibbs, calling from the boardroom.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, well, thanks.
So we got a generic set of questions, everybody in the, all applicants have given the same questions today and everybody's got five minutes of time to get through the questions. And one moment while I conference interview. Chris, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, we have Leah on the line with us. Okay, Leah, tell us about yourself and why you decided to apply to serve on the school board?
I am currently an active participant in the school district. I have two students in the school district and I am interested in this position to help our districts become better leaders in education. If we're moving in the right direction and we have some really exciting opportunities we can be a part of, there's still some work to be done in the district and I have some really great ways that we can make some of these improvements. I think we have exciting opportunities coming up with our community partners that could really improve education from everywhere from pre-k to our high school groups and I in general want our teachers to feel supported. I want education to be exciting for our students. I would like to see it become more of an immersive experience for our students. And just a little about myself professionally, I'm a environmental biologist and a laboratory supervisor. I'm a very data-driven person and I'm a person who likes to ask questions and ensure that what we're deciding is the best choice for our community.
Okay, if appointed, what would be your objectives as a school director?
My objective would be, how I mentioned earlier, there are some specific ways I think we can make some improvements. East Berwick, for example, needs some more classroom space and I think if we moved pre-k to Next Effect, who accommodates the current program and hopefully expand upon it, that would benefit everybody. Studies continuously show that early intervention is key in successfully educating students and if we can give our students a strong foundation with more pre-k opportunities, we have the space that we can make that happen. I would also like to use line streets for additional classroom trees in East Berwick. I think that would help all of our students in the building and especially some of our most vulnerable students that need some extra support. I would also like to see Next Effect used as additional space for CPE programs to provide our high school students with some career opportunities and I also think we have some exciting opportunities we could have with community partners. For example, AWS in 62 other locations around the globe, they have something called Six Big Spaces and I think ours deserves to be the 63rd location. These are spaces where they provide VR technology to students and districts and I think our students could have access to that. It could expose them to interests and career paths that they might not otherwise be aware of.
Okay. Next question, what qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
Like I mentioned earlier, I'm a scientist. I'm a very data-driven person. I like to collect as much information as possible in the decision-making process. I would like to keep a positive school culture for our students and our teachers. I'm a person who can strategically think through plans and goals to ensure their success and I really value communication. I want to be listening and learning through the process and see how we can all better support everyone in our district.
Okay, what do you believe our students should be able to do when they graduate?
Anything they want to do. I think the options and the opportunities should be that one.
If appointed, would you be able to commit the time necessary to actively participate in the responsibilities of the board?
Yes, I would be.
Okay, you have any questions for us?
I don't believe so.
All right. Thank you for joining us. We'll have a decision later in the meeting and we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, happy new year.
You too, so much.
Mr. Schechter, thank you for joining us. You're next. Right there at the head of the table, be fine.
If you get the head of the table, everyone or...
So we have a generic set of questions, everybody's getting the same set of questions. We've got a timer going for five minutes to get through the questions. Okay, tell us about yourself and why you decided to apply to serve on the school board?
Well, I've always been involved in public service, been involved with fire departments, fire police. As a part of council, I'm a council member, pastor, also a current out of plan official. I like working with the community, making a better contribution.
If appointed, what would be your objectives as a school director?
Well, we keep the budget under control, keep our quality of our education quality very important, maintain integrity of the staff and educators, make sure students are needs taken care of. I had a younger daughter graduate, her place was, I'm kind of a regular place where operations as well, and I've been involved in school leadership, so I used to, some of this.
What qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
I guess the big one is back being in the borough, I've worked with B and contracts, I've worked with budgets, private budgets, budget control, file, that would be the big one. Negotiations, the tax, the police negotiations, and also the PPW negotiations very good. The budget for five, depending on how close I was, I was a member of the council and the doctor, Christian, actually five or six doctors, we took four, and then they cost, I just have no opposite.
What do you believe our students should be able to do when they graduate?
Students, that's a good question. I think students need to be able to grab a good job. A lot of students, I saw this with my daughter, she didn't, she didn't go to college, a lot of students don't need time. My son actually lives fourth in the class, he's got a high school as well, but he's in contract, he makes a lot of money, he and my wife get it. So it's important to, you know, I think equality, you need to have guidance from counselors to make sure that kids are on a path and not sending them off where they don't belong. A lot of students, you know, five, it's not much better than your community service and contractors and something that's required. Some, some, you know, other creative sets, obviously, but we need some leaders, counselors very quick, to steer and make that, I would make, to make decisions.
If appointed, would you be able to commit the time necessary to actively participate in the responsibilities of the board?
I have a lot of questions, I'm all the time, I mean, it's just six o'clock, I can come over to that, I feel it's not a problem, I don't have a special need, but I would make the time, I would make it an important position, I would definitely make the time, all the time.
You have any questions for us?
Well, what are you looking for as far as, certainly I can answer that if I miss, that's not my question. I would, I would say that if you're active participant, if you have a, you're involved in sort of plan, statistics, being an advocate for the society, not a member of it, help on projects, building up, doing, you know, exactly, I have five kids, I have a kid repeating, I go all fast food, so yeah, I just, I just think I would really love to be a part of my project and so.
Thank you for joining us.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome to stay or go, we'll have a decision by then.
All right, so, well, I'll tell you what, I'll sit here. You want to curse my Q and A or I'm just talking to my server? I'm not one of those who wants to curse my phone.
I am hard here. I'm two, I saw you at the microphone. Tell us about yourself and why you decided to apply to serve on the school board?
I work currently for Dan Doyes, who is a manager of the director of the school, as well, in Columbia, and I've given to...
He's speaking in the microphone, that's not...
I've given to a few school directors, nothing to give back to my own. I have been telling him that I'm working, and my daughter's in a school right now, and pretty much since I...
If appointed, what would be your objectives as a school director?
Education.
What qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
Thirty-year construction experience, does not have a preference for school. I've done very first steel and concrete, modeled, built, and tested, and it's seen outside the light, or put down. I have worked as school board for almost 20 years. I have made instructor of the school for almost 20 years. Been working for almost 20 years.
What do you believe our students should be able to do when they graduate?
What do you believe what?
What do you believe our students should be able to do when they graduate?
Well, consider I have three, some just over here. My husband is the director of the grounds for, for their, that's what he does.
My first is the director of urban grounds for their, that's what he does. The other one is an IT data analyst, and the T one is Florida. And my little one is upperclassman, I feel, fighting. You know, that's the T one. Students here, including schools and low tech, can do anything they want. They've got a great curriculum, they're right under the mountain.
If appointed, will you be able to commit the time necessary to actively participate in the responsibilities of the board?
Yes, I've already talked to my superintendent and the president of the high school board at Danville, and if we do their full approval, do you apply and appoint me to serve and allow me to continue my time?
You have any questions for us?
How long is the appointment for? Does this two lucky people have valid if it's, that's, that's fine, I have to...
This term is till November thirtieth of this year.
November thirtieth, all right. So, is this all open as far as the district, you know, the seats? Do they go by ward or do they all be in seats?
It's general. It's up to the state, I know, so that's one way to do it.
Well, I can still, not write in yet, but just wait.
Yeah, no, you can still do a write-in on November, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, that's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. You're welcome to stay or leave. The announcement will be made later, the vote will be taken, and all will be here.
Okay.
Hi Valerie, we're unable to make the connection to the phone, so we have you on cell phone, so if you have any issues hearing us, please look up Stone.
Okay.
Chris, are you back with us?
She has come here.
Okay. Hey Valerie, everybody got the same set of questions and everybody have time to get through all the questions?
Okay.
Question number one, tell us about yourself, why you decided to apply to serve on the school board?
I have lived in the district for five years. I am a mother of two middle school students. I am a nurse and also a wife of a small business owner, small, small local business owner. And I think I would like to be a part of the board because in the time that my kids have been in school here, I have become very passionate about making sure that they have the best possible and most beneficial educational experience. And being part of the board would help me to do that.
If appointed, what would be your objectives as a school director?
I think that's probably summed up with making student-centered decisions that are also fiscally responsible for the district.
What qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
My career experience has taken me through a variety of departments. I have worked in critical care. I've also worked for a multi-site nonprofit community care center. And I've also worked with pediatrics. And I think that those environments have led me to be a strong leader. I think that I make level-headed, informed decisions while thinking critically. I have a team approach and I'm an advocate. And I think that those are excellent skills to be brought to the table.
What do you believe our students should be able to do when they graduate?
Well, for those students who are not necessarily going to post-secondary or college, I think that being able to think critically and problem solve is crucial. Communicating as a team member while also making independent decisions. I think it's important that they understand their responsibilities as citizens and, yeah, I think, I think those are the important things for them to do, as well as making sure that our kids that are going on the post-secondary have, that are prepared for that as well.
If appointed, will you be able to commit the time necessary to actively participate in the responsibilities of the board?
Absolutely.
You have any questions for us?
No, I do not.
All right, that's the end of the questions. Thank you for your time. The board will have a decision by the end of this meeting and we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, happy to meet you. You're welcome. You all did a great job. It's awkward to interview you and then talk about you.
We were just saying the same thing, yeah.
I think we'd be lucky to have any of you, you've all done a very nice job and I think you all did a lot.
Thank you for doing this.
Is Nick a nomination now or are we going to wait until we get to the agenda? We'll have to do it later on. Wait, wait until they're tied or something.
I'm watching.
Yes, we can bring the gentleman to that. We have the, we have a couple of attachments here for academic affairs and budget, so we're going to question them in the end. There will be a policy meeting here tomorrow at ten AM. Has there been anything from low tech since the last meeting?
Honestly, I don't have anything because I missed the June meeting. I was waiting for that. There is no office meeting, they canceled that due to the summer because I'm up in Jedi, so I don't have a meeting. However, the supplies do, the new appointment also, Mr. Eisenhower was our second J O C representative. So we're going to be looking for another, whatever step up for that. We don't have to do it now, but for at least to think about it, we've now the office gates, we're there. Here at the goal, it's a whole time. The board is the alternate, so anyone wants to vote, they obviously vote it. But I strongly suggest that...
You have to talk about that if you want.
I just want to get it in everyone's mind for...
So next up is approval of the board minutes for our June sixteenth meeting. All in favor of approval? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Actually, in the monthly bills, if you're attached to the agenda, they would have any questions?
No, no.
Call call please.
Mr. Hess?
Yeah.
Is this in your life?
Krista, call call for the bills.
I'm ready, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to echo what Mark said, that I think the state of candidates are exceptional. Coming to a visitor, a long-term or a long-staying visitor, I really have grown to appreciate the people of this community and the fact that you had so many motivated people to come out and throw you out during, and I appreciate it, you know, being a cool guy these past couple of months. John Eisenhower was an exceptional board member. The board, the other eight members of this team, this, this, and our, all exceptional people. So whoever joins this team, you know, I'm confident will do a great job. I'm also confident we're going to be part of a winning team or at least a cohesive team. I just wish you all the luck.
Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment. This round is for agenda items only. Please state your name and township or borough.
Crystal Mikulowski, as in previous board meetings, on the agenda is a coaches list, yet you don't provide the list. So how can the public comment on a list that is not provided to us to review?
All right, we'll move on to general items. Three items tonight, one motion, anybody have any question on any of these? Do we get motion approved, general items one through three?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, aye. So if anybody has a copy of the agenda showing by auto, home health care contract, that has gone through, do we have that on there? Anyone?
Yeah, we saw there.
I've received my book. Personnel, we have nine items. Do they have any questions or comments on any of these?
They're taking two coaches list and call for us. And they both quit their, their, their season for reasons around that. The mains, what they still on?
Yeah, they have.
But they quit in the season, who's that, the mains?
We had, we had our athletic team. We had them back home, they opened up their job, we didn't have them.
So, we paid them last year before they quit. They wait to begin the season, and then they were stuck trying to find a boat, and then maybe up that money that's left over, and they do half their season last year, or during the spring, that we paid for?
Well, we pay them right at the beginning, so that money they, because they do, baseball, like you said, baseball, they all, they all, they're back before, so by the time it came to the second week, they got their first base, and they went to the second, and they signed up, and they applied up for the first. But we had, we were, you know, we had, we decided that they should, it could be part of the... We did have, we just let it go.
Any other questions on any of these items? Do we get motion approved, personnel items one through nine? Six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Ollie Simpler, Eric Pay, Karen May, and all of those.
I have a guess, that's a state down P five and P nine.
No, one P nine? No, one P nine.
May.
On the mains, or P one?
The same, uh...
Okay, so yes, the rest of the... All right, so, P one through P eight pass. C nine pass, we made certain of Karen May, Karen May, Karen May. You got that vote? So, the coaches list passed, we made certain of Karen May, the vault, Karen May, the question, they did not pass. And that brings us back around to appointing our director of the league.
I think it's open for not paying.
Yep, there's no initial conversation and nominations.
I don't think it's easy to win.
One of the time.
Can you please pop up? It's really hard to do all the things.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
We can't hear.
Oh, okay. Oh, you should hear. So Mr. Hess nominates Leah Zolinski. Yeah. Were there any other nominations? Mike Keon, Mrs. Post nominates Mike Keon. And we get a second for Mike Keon. Okay? So, just pointing, show of hands, do you have your names? All right, so, if you'll show a hand speaks to these candidates, candidate with five will be placed on the line and then we'll do the motion in second, roll call, roll, commit with the show. Okay, so you said call call. I don't, we call call the nomination person. So we show a hand, so, any... Okay, one of the others. So you and Rob, you've got a restart. Alright, so, he was nominated first, show hands, Leah Zulinski. Yeah. So we're, we're approving the, um, the What, what are you doing, please?
You're just putting, you're putting out the vote.
Right. Just put him on the name and put on the line, you feel that's the line? So show hands for Leah Zulinski. So putting her on the line. So just put his name on the line to be voted. So three, four. Show hands. Oh, Chris, I'm sorry, um, Leah or Mike Keon?
Uh, Mike, yeah, Michael, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, like, are you show hands for Leah? To put him on the ballot. Okay, so we, we have four votes, put the on ballot. Show hands for Mike Keon, to put Mike Keon on the ballot.
I have my hand up.
Chris, did you say you have your hand up?
I do, yeah.
Uh, so you have A five for Mike, and a one for Leah. So a four for Leah, five for Mike. And, uh, show down Leah's name, we'll, uh, We use the nominee, Keon, we'll be, we'll, 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 now is the yes or no? Alright, so we have Mike Keon, approval point, Mike Keon, and so we have We get motion approved. In a second. There's a B roll call.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. So, Mr. Mike Keon is the, uh, we are ninth member until the 30th.
I'm sending a message right now, because he weren't sure.
Okay, he's close by.
Yeah. Might be active in meetings, because that's the part of meetings.
No, it doesn't have to be, he's committed to matters, so, if you hang out, we have the magistrate come in just for you.
Can we bail on this heated sauna room?
I'm sorry?
I said, it's alright if we bail on this heated sauna room.
Oh, yeah, you're free, come and talk, look.
Sorry to the rest of ya, sorry.
See, we have any old business discussed? We have any new business discussed? At some point soon, we'll have to, uh, we'll have to discuss, uh, many appointments. And did things get balanced or not? We did ask that question, I don't have any information, the last we talked So the question was, where are we with our HVAC projects and the answer is we are on track to be opening the first day of school. Uh, for new business, we will have to address committees in the near future. I bring Yeah, at least I can So our, our, our bond, yeah, the bond closing is just there. I'm sorry, yes, it's 13th of 17th. That brings us to our last round of public comment, three minutes, please state your name and township or borough.
Travis Culver, Salem Township. Um, you announced that we're going to have a policy committee meeting tomorrow, but it wasn't posted anywhere and there's no agenda, it has to be posted 24 hours, according to the Sunshine Act law of PA.
Right, I knew the agenda was posted today.
Where?
On the, uh,
Not on Board Docs.
It was It was in today's press enterprise and it was also posted on the district's Facebook page earlier today. Okay. Anyone else?
I just want to thank everybody for bringing, bringing out the opportunity, uh, Bailey Booth. I, I, here's the one thing, I said, the cycle for replacement, I mean, that's
So there are four seats open right now, four-year terms, as they were through the primary in May. Uh, the county committees will appoint a nominee to be on the ballot for a two-year seat in November.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Miranda Costa, I live in Palm Beach, I, I, can you just clarify, since it was a roll call vote, how it went down with the new member? We cannot hear anything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, so if you could clarify by talking into the mic, just, thank you.
So for the roll call vote, Mike Keon was approved as the, as the appointee by a vote of six to two. Before this meeting, we had an executive session Oh, I'm sorry.
Crystal Michalowski, Nuska Park Township. Um, I am wondering what is the district doing to ensure compliance with Title IX? The football program is now using all three buildings and locker rooms at Chris Smith Field. However, to my knowledge, softball, baseball, field hockey, and boys soccer do not have a locker room to change in and must use, must change in bathrooms. Girls' varsity soccer program now has to share the visitors locker room at Chris Smith with ninth grade boys who get to keep their football gear in the lockers. As for Title IX, schools receiving federal funding are required to provide comparable locker room facilities for both male and female students. The law requires that if schools provide separate locker rooms for boys and girls, the facilities must be comparable in terms of quality, size and amenities. Examples of violations would be a school with a larger veteran-equipped locker room for boys than for girls would be a violation of Title IX. Similarly, a school that locks, that lacks a separate locker room for girls or forces them to use the boys locker room or yet inadequate space could also be violating the law. It is understood that the budget is tight, but all of these athletes should have comparable facilities to use. So if football gets three locker rooms, other teams should at least get one.
Anyone else? So before this meeting, we had a executive session for one contract item. We will not be holding our regular meeting next week. Our next meeting will be August 18th here at 6 o'clock. We get motion to adjourn.